United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So this is a meeting of the Westwood Select Board. We grant Westwood Media Center permission to record this meeting. Is there anyone else wishing to record the meeting? Okay, we're going to jump into a discussion of the reason several people are in our room this evening, and that's we have a couple of promotions within our police department. And where's Chief? There you are. What are you doing over there? Why don't you come on over here? We have a promotion to lieutenant and one to sergeant. There was just a swearing in by our town clerk, but Chief Silva, if you can just mention briefly these promotions and highlight, you know, aspects of why these two individuals have received them.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having us. Thank you for taking us out of order. I think I have some hungry mouths and eager mouths behind me that want to go upstairs and have some cake.
Everybody's behaving so nicely, too.
So we're here tonight to celebrate the promotion to lieutenant of Joseph Vinci and the promotion to sergeant of Don Murphy. Starting off with Don. Don came to work here in Westwood back in 2008 as a patrol officer, working basically all the shifts, but as new officers often do on the night shift. He then became a field training officer, very important job, training the new officers in how they do what they do to make sure that that delivery of service that's so important to the town is carried out in a way that's consistent and fair and compassionate and high quality. After working as a field training officer, Don then competed for and was selected for detective, where he became really the town's de facto first real drug detective that we had. We had done some, what I'd call, one-off drug investigations over the years, but Don's principal role really was to attack drug cases, the opiate epidemic, at various levels. At the user level, it was designed to take the drugs out of the community and get people help that they needed. At the dealer level, it was to make sure those people that were responsible for coming in and dealing that poison in and throughout the community got the help they needed by way of going to jail and removing the problem. Don worked on that, and then ironically, when now Lieutenant Vinci was appointed detective sergeant, which was, again, one of the first times we had anybody long-term in that role, they began working on fugitive investigations. Those people that commit crimes in the community, against our residents, against our visitors, go to court and get arraigned, and then vanish. And many times, while it's important and it's always our goal to try to retrieve property in the cases of burglaries or other types of cases, sometimes sadly that stuff is in and gone and sold, and so the only modicum of justice that the victims get is to know that those people face their day in court. And so prior to that time, the people were fleeing the community and fleeing the state, and they were never facing justice. And so under then Detective Sergeant Vinci's leadership and Detective Murphy's initiative, we went all over the country, actually, bringing back fugitives that we found, that we tracked, that we worked with other law enforcement agencies with to identify and brought them back to Westwood. Don has his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Southern New Hampshire University. He's joined here with us tonight with his wife Nancy and his two boys Anthony and Connor. And I just couldn't be any more proud of the work that he did and how he's competed for the position and the level of service that he's given to the community. So I'd like to introduce you to Sergeant Don Murphy.
Sergeant? Congratulations to you and to your family for your rising to this level within the police department. It's well deserved and we're very happy for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next is Joseph Vinci. So Joe, another resident in and through Westwood schools like Don, athlete here in the school, went to Dartmouth College, got his degree in government, and got a job and really was on his way, very successful. And then, as I mentioned earlier, he decided that his goal was to be in the community, not in Cuba. And so he came here and took the police exam, became a police officer, like Don did after him. So respected was the work that he did. He was selected to be a field training officer, a very important role, then got promoted to sergeant, topped that process. And as sergeant, around that, very shortly thereafter, is when I came here to Westwood, I made Joe our field training coordinator so that we could make sure that we had consistency throughout our field training program, did a fantastic job in that role. Then as the need for different types of policing and different things in town came to be with largely due to the growth that university had, but also just in the changing world we live in. It's ever-evolving. We decided, and with the support of the board, actually, we were able to create a detective sergeant position, which Joe competed for and he topped. He was selected for that. And under Joe's leadership, we were able to not only enhance the quantity of cases that were investigated, because sometimes it seems like there's a never-ending supply of cases and a limited ability to investigate them. You know, the detectives are the small end of the funnel, if you will, and the cases that come in every day are at the large end. And so under Joe's leadership, we were able to make sure that as many cases as possible, those that had any form of solvability at all, and even some that we didn't think we could solve, were investigated thoroughly. As mentioned, new types of investigations, drug investigations, fugitive investigations took place. That was all under Joe's leadership, as well as background investigations for new candidates for both the police and the fire department. Joe coordinated those investigations as well. We then had promotional process for lieutenant, and much like the sergeant's process, and much like every process we have here in town, we just have a tremendous staff. The Lord knows this, we've talked about this, but just for the sake of saying it publicly, the town should be so proud of the men and women that we have here in the police department. Very high quality, very caring, very dedicated, and so to, first of all, to have a staff like that is extraordinary. We're very blessed. And then to be able to compete against that staff is really, it's just a tremendous thing. And so Joe competed for the position against, of lieutenant, against the same type of high-quality candidates that Don competed for. In the end, we could only pick one, and that was the person who topped the process, and that was Joe. Joe is now in charge of our operations division, which is, you know, everything from the 911 calls that come in to the patrol cars that are in and through the community, whether it's responding to accidents or going into the schools. So I'm very pleased and proud to introduce to the board and to the community Lieutenant Joe Vinci, who's joined by his wife Laura, his dad Salvatore, and his mother Peggy, his brother Frank, who came all the way from Georgia, who's a federal agent, his grandmother, his sister-in-law Rebecca, and his two boys, Joseph Junior and Mario, Lieutenant Joseph.
Again, congratulations, very well deserved. I said to your father, I remember when he was sitting in the room next door when we first hired you. Don, I remember when you came in, too, almost like it was yesterday. So I know it wasn't, but you both have risen up in the ranks very quickly and very successfully. And again, congratulations for this achievement tonight.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief, and to the whole department. You set an excellent example in this community. You take very good care of the community, and we're extremely appreciative of all you do.
Thank you.
And we're the only thing between you and having more fun tonight.
But you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Feel free to go enjoy yourselves and enjoy this moment, and back to work tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much for the support.
Okay. I'm going to circle back to Chairman's update. There are a few things I want to highlight tonight. I'm not going to go into tremendous detail, but I'll start with information we have from the town clerk. The annual election process, believe it or not, starts very soon. Starting Tuesday, January 14th, people who would, are registered voters, who are interested in running for town positions, can go to the clerk's office and do what we call pull papers, take out the papers necessary to get signatures, to provide to the town clerk if interested in running for office. The positions that are opened, I will mention: Board of Assessors, Housing Authority, two positions on the Library Trustee Board, Moderator, Planning Board, two positions on the School Committee, Select Board, and in an odd set of circumstances, all three positions for the Sewer Commission are open. One is for a one-year term, second for a two-year term, and the third for a three-year term. And that arose out of positions being vacated and the procedures we follow that we've appointed people to the two shorter-term positions, but they have to run if they want to stay on the board. So that's why all three are actually open for election. The couple of dates I'd like people to know, the presidential primary in Massachusetts is Tuesday, March 3rd. There will be early voting, and information will be available for that. It's going to be in late February. The town election is April 28th, and town meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 4th. Moving on from that, I just want to alert people to mail they hopefully have received, and that pertains to the annual town census, and that is due back in the clerk's office within 10 days of receipt. So it's very important that everybody fill that out. The consequence of not returning it is, if you're a registered voter, you will be assigned to the inactive voting list, and it makes it challenging for you if you show up to vote on an election day to actually be able to do so. So that, you can avoid that by just completing the form and returning it to the town clerk. The last item under Chairman's update is the federal census is coming up. Residents across the country will be receiving information on the federal census in March, and information will be available on that. I believe Dottie Powers is coming into our next meeting to go into greater detail on that process.
To a future meeting, yes.
Yeah, okay. Moving along, scheduled action. We have a public hearing scheduled now for installation of a new poll, EverSource Verizon Poll, at 72 Reservoir Road. Christine is here from EverSource. Welcome back.
Thank you.
How's everything going in your world?
Good, very good.
And say, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
We have this as a posted public hearing, and this is the normal procedure we go through for installations of new polls, and in this case, it's at a residential lot at the end of Reservoir Road, which is off of Martha Jones Road.
Yes.
And it's, as I could tell from the map, it's at the end of a dead end?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so what other information would you like us to be aware of, Christine?
Well, we're looking to install a new poll, poll number 114 over six, and the poll line dead ends at a certain point, and that's where they broke through the end of the cul-de-sac to put the new house in. So we have to extend the overhead wires down in order to provide service to the new house.
Okay. Is the house already under construction?
Yeah, it actually looks like it's almost pretty much completed.
Oh, well, this would be in the way of it being occupied, for sure. Any questions from the board on this? Any questions from the public, as it is a public hearing? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
So I move that we grant permission to the Enstar Electric, doing business as EverSource Energy and Verizon, for the installation of one new poll, number 114 over six, to provide new electric service to 72 Reservoir Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay, thanks, Christine.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is a request for a new event, bike ride, and Mark Walter, you're here? Why don't you join us, just because this is a new discussion? There might be a few questions. This, Mark is representing an effort for the Harvest Bike Ride for Respite on September 26, 2020. It is actually a very long ride, and I guess there are three ride distances, 27 mile, 50 mile, and 100 mile, and it's only the latter one, the longer route, that would find its way in Westwood for three to four miles?
Correct.
Okay. Why don't you just talk about what this organization is or what you're...
Absolutely. So this is a charity bike ride to benefit the Michael Lisnow Respite Center, which is in Hopkinton. And so I professionally have operated an event business, but I also work with different events like this. So I've been partnered with them on developing the course, on helping them figure out how to, you know, launch this. This will be the first year of this event. So as you mentioned, there are three different ride distances. Only the 100-mile ride will come through town. The ride will start and end in Hopkinton. It'll start at 7:30. So the first cyclist coming through Westwood probably be around 10:00 a.m., and they should be all through by about 1:00 p.m. And for this first year, you know, we may have, for this longer-distance ride, 50 riders. So they'll be pretty spread out by the time they get into town, which will be around mile 60. They'll enter, I can go through the route if you feel that's necessary.
Sure.
Sure. So they'll be coming in off of, from Dover, up Walpole Street, then onto Pocahontas Street. They'll continue onto Dover Road, then left onto Conant, go up that hill, left onto Country Lane, left on Sunset, left on Summer, and then down by the golf course, left on Westfield, and then ride off back into Dover.
Out of curiosity, as you plan something like this, given your experience, how do you let the portions of communities know that this is happening? I mean, granted, this is a public discussion, but I'm sure 99.5% of that neighborhood won't know from this meeting that this is going to happen.
Right. Yeah, I mean, so there really isn't much of a communication out to all the towns other than what the town is able to do on our behalf, so through like the Facebook page, things like that. So we do rely on, you know, we do obviously communicate with the selectmen, the police, and the fire to make them aware, and then whatever vehicles are available through the town. You know, there will be, we do mark the course to help guide riders along the way, and that would be done with some signage that we might put up that would be taken down within 48 hours, as well as road route arrows that are like biodegradable stickers that'll go on the road itself. So that provides some, hey, something's going on here.
When you put the markers up?
That'll happen usually, it'll, so for this ride, which is on a Sunday, I'd probably start doing that on like Thursday. I'm not sure when I'd be in Westwood, you know, I might do that at the end, since I'm also a resident of Westwood, so it makes it easy.
On the way home.
Right.
Chris, have you thought of who would be the appoint person on questions in the Select Board office? Would it be you and Tish? If people end up calling and have questions or concerns or how?
In our office, it would be, yes.
Okay. Yeah, that, I mean, to me, that's the only question I had, was how people will know. And I guess I do have one other question. Have you, you've actually met with the police department, somebody in the police department already?
So we have had communication, and I would be, so we talked, I talked with Tish, and I guess it's been raised with the police, and so we talked about where we would have police details for the event.
And you do think there will be some police detail?
I didn't think you thought there was going to be police detail.
Well, we talked about like, they would have, we wouldn't necessarily retain them for a four-hour detail, but they would be notified, oh, they're coming through, so if there were available officers, they would probably put them there.
Got it, which isn't detailed.
Yeah, I thought they could do it with the day staff.
Right. That's just coverage on call.
Yes.
And he, Joe Vinci, we've been in touch with Joe Vinci from the police department. He's aware of it.
We had him here.
I'm back from the party. Any questions from the board?
No.
Okay.
So I move that we approve the portion of the 100-mile Harvest Bike Ride for Respite 2020 on September 26th, proceed through the Westwood. The bike ride will enter Westwood from Pocahontas Street in Dover, and then proceed through Westwood going down Dover Road, Conant Road, Country Lane, Sunset Road, and then onto Summer Street, approximately mile 62 to 65, according to the information we have.
Yeah, then Summer left on Westfield.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Sounds like you're connected to the right people.
Yeah.
Good luck with this.
Thank you.
And I would just say, if you get a sense from registration that it's bigger numbers, then please communicate that as well.
Absolutely.
Because people will need to think accordingly.
Plan accordingly, yes.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. All right.
My favorite time of year, budget year.
Budget season. Mrs. Dukeman and team, welcome back. I think we'll be discussing budget overall, some operating items, and some capital items tonight. Let's see, we have the fire chief here, and I'm just going to turn it over to you, because I know you'll give us an update and take us in the direction you want us to.
Okay. Do you want to do the overall first and then?
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
Thank you.
So there is a packet? Yep, yeah. It's just a presentation. It's just a summary of the material.
Do you have any extras for people, if anybody would like to? We can share.
Well, it's up here, Oswald.
Yeah.
Up on the screen.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to have a copy? Thank you.
This is similar to what you had in your packet, but we're just continuing on with budget season.
Having a lot of snafus tonight with electronics.
What do I need to do here?
Arrows.
Yeah.
We've got the same section, right?
No. Thank you.
Okay.
So just a reminder that you've been over your last several meetings going through all kinds of financial information, reviewing where we stand with financial accounts, revenue projections, looking at operating capital budget. You've done that for several meetings. And then, sorry. Okay. In your January meetings, we have one month more of kind of budget background and development. So in your couple of meetings in January, we'll continue with looking at operating capital budgets, updating revenue projections later in the month, and then we're targeting that February 1st date to produce the 21 proposed budget. Just a reminder, the overall budget's looking to do several different things: maintain our overall operating budgets, the quality of our services we're provided, within sustainable, moderate operating budget growth, continue the high level of capital investment, similar to levels we've done in the current year. That would include our base municipal and school capital, as well as a supplemental capital to get at some extra projects. The road bond, you've heard some information on, it's looking for that to go forward in FY '21, and continue the progress on our liability and reserve accounts. You've looked at the overall revenue projections, very similar for each year, really, under Prop 2 and 1/2, where our main source of revenue, our tax revenue, will provide us about $2.8 million in new revenue. We first look at what do we have to pay for first out of our budget increase, and that is our fixed cost budget: healthcare, pension costs, OPEB, all of that. We went through that in detail at one of your last meetings for FY '21. That's about a $920,000 increase, leaving almost about $2 million available for other budget options. And then we look at, you know, when we look at operating budget increases, we fall each year at about the 3% increase for operating budget, very standard and consistent, what we can provide for those operating budgets under a normal year of Prop 2 and 1/2. Just a reminder that the operating budget is our most important area and largest area of spending each year. In our current year, FY '20, our overall budget is just over $102 million, and almost 70% of that is the school and municipal operating budget, so the cost, place where we're providing services to the community and the area where we spend most of our resources. Those budgets, with the school budget at just over $46 million and municipal $22 million, it does cost us about $687,000 for each 1% increase to the budget. In this chart, we've looked at, you know, what has been the growth in our operating budget over the last several years. In our most recent years, you can see on the bar graph in the middle, the table, we've been around that 3% to 3.5% increase, and that is that sustainable growth level that we can provide within our ongoing budget. Some earlier years, we used some additional university station money to exceed those growths for certain reasons in the budget, but really that 3% to 3.5% is our comfortable sustainable growth level for operating budget. So just looking at our early projections on the municipal operating budget for FY '21, just looking at where that budget is in the current year. So the budget again in the current year FY '20 is $22.2 million. The table at the top shows what percent of the budget we have in each of our functional areas: general government, public safety, economic development, human services. Almost 70% of our budget is in the DPW and public safety areas, shown on the pie graph in the blue. It's our main area where we're providing services. It's where the majority of our staffing is in the municipal budget. So really, police and fire and public works are where the bulk of our dollars are, as well as our staffing, but the municipal budget does have to stretch to provide so many different services. You know, the recreation programs, the library services, very diverse range of services that go throughout the community, reach all areas. The municipal budget is primarily a salary-driven budget. The pie chart shows in blue the percent of salaries that make up the $22 million. So in the current year, $16 million of that budget, or 70, almost 75% of the budget, is in our salaries. Really, the services that we're providing through the municipal budget are really in our people. Again, it's our police officers, our firefighters, our DPW employees. That's really where the funds are used. We have, in recent years, been able to supplement some of the staffing levels to help improve the service delivery in the community, primarily in public safety. So over the last several years, we've been able to significantly add to our staffing in the fire and police department, 14 positions in fire, nine positions in police. Those were primarily funded with the university station revenue, the new tax revenue. The public safety staffing was the most direct service impact that was reviewed with the university station. It was the number-one thing we knew we had to do with that new money, and we've been able to really make some significant improvements to the staffing levels in those departments, help improve the services, not only for the university station, but throughout the town. And including the last time that we did add new positions was in this current year, FY '20, at the last town meeting. So we're coming off a year where we just did that. In general, the municipal budget has had relatively modest growth over the last couple of years, as shown by the line graph on the top and then the table at the bottom. Again, in the most recent years, we've been in that 3% to 3.5% growth, and then we've been able to supplement that, again, with the public safety departments with the university station revenue. So now looking at what's ahead for FY '21. The municipal budget request right now, we're at a 3.2% increase in salaries, 7.3% in expenses, an overall increase of $940,000, or 4.25%. I do want to point out, and we're going to go through, the base municipal budget is really at a 3.2%, a relatively modest maintenance-year-type budget. We are seeing two items that are increasing in the DPW functional area that are really driving the overall budget up to that 4.25 at this point. So you can see on the chart on the bottom that the DPW has a 6%, 6.3% increase at this point. There's really two items responsible for that, the solid waste and recycling budget and our building maintenance account. So just to look at that further. Again, when we look at the budget increase right now, the request would be $944,000 increase, or 4.25%. On the salary side, the base increase is 3.2%. That's a very streamlined budget increase, no new positions included. That really includes any contractual obligations we have for salaries, you know, very kind of typical and moderate increase for when there's no new staffing. On the expense side, as I said, two items that are driving a larger increase than we typically see. So one is in the building maintenance area, the total increase, $90,000. So the one, this one building maintenance budget covers all of municipal buildings: police, fire station, DPW... police, fire station, DPW, library, senior center. Because we've been bringing some of our new buildings online now, we do need to increase our spending in this area. So the bulk of the spending, the increase for the $90,000 is coming from what we're adding to help maintain the new police and fire station. We've built these beautiful new buildings. We want to sit here 20 years from now and still talk about this as the new police station like we do with the high school. It does increase our commitment, though, to what we have available for our building maintenance staff to make sure that they're maintaining these buildings properly and ongoing and keeping them up to speed right from the beginning. The second item is the solid waste budget and recycling, something we've been talking about with you for, over the past year. Todd's been talking with you about that, and there's also been lots of stories in the news in general beyond Westwood. So this is a budget that we're really feeling pressure from. The recycling line item, our overall budget for solid waste right now is about $1.3 million. So to have significant pressure on a budget of that size can be problematic, trying to fit that into a, you know, maintenance budget within the 3%, 3 and 1/2% increase. So right now, the total requested increase for the solid waste is about $138,000. The individual line item on recycling is a 22% increase. And that's really based on what we've talked about in the past, some of the changes occurring in that industry, costs being experienced that were not before, the change in what we can recycle, and some of the impact on, you know, if we're not cleanly recycling. So this is something we're going to need to continue to work on. It's really... Looks like this will continue this year and future years, and I think we're going to have to talk about how do we maybe handle this budget differently. We may need to look at the trash budget as more of a fixed cost budget, because we're really not going to be able to contain this budget within, you know, the 3% to 3 and 1/2% that we'd look to have in our overall municipal. In some ways, it's like the health insurance budget, where there are some things that are beyond control of what we can do that impact the cost. When we talk about the solid waste budget, I do want to remind the board and the community, we do carry the solid waste costs within our tax base. And that is different than a lot of surrounding communities and communities we consider ourselves comparable to. A lot of other communities that, you know, may surprise you, you know, do not pick up the trash or recycling for their residents. They don't have that curbside service. They're hiring private service, or they're, you know, taking the trash themselves and the recycling to a specific area. So we are still carrying that cost and providing that service to all residents within the tax base. We have talked before that because it's within our tax base, about 25% of that budget is paid for through our commercial tax base, but we do not pick up the commercial trash. So really, this is really the one key area in the budget. Other than that, it's a very streamlined municipal request. While we'll need to continue to, you know, work and have Todd work on the solid waste budget and what changes we can do, it's really not something that we're going to be able to trim this back to fit within kind of our general 3% parameter. Just, you know, where we'll go with the budget, our next steps. So we're going to continue, as you're doing tonight, to review the capital budget, specific items that you've been looking at. We're continuing to work on the operating budget, both municipal and the schools are also. We'll continue to work on the municipal budget and kind of give that another streamline. On the revenue items, we're going to continue to kind of look at and review our revenue projections. We will now, in January, we'll hear in a couple of weeks what the state revenue will be, near the end of the month, when the governor comes out with that. And then again, we'd be looking at your next meeting in January, the 21st, to kind of put everything together where we are at this point. And that would allow us to produce those budget documents by February 1, the municipal budget, the overall budget summary, and the initial capital budget articles. We then roll out those budget books to the Finance and Warrant Commission, and we actually go into their meeting on February 11th and kind of go through the budget presentation with them.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
So we have... Chief, you want us to chief to come over now?
Sure.
You have an update for us on your multipurpose vehicle proposal?
Yes.
Thank you for your detailed information. Very interesting reading.
Hopefully, that gave you a cleaner idea of what I'm trying to do here and the goal.
I don't think you left out a detail, chief.
And you did receive my updated cost sheet, correct? Because I had uploaded the wrong one. But I'm hoping that the document sells the picture that we're... What we're trying to do is really change the philosophy on the way we run our business and go from a mirroring concept where we mirror every piece of resource at Station 1, it's Station 2. But the only thing we're not mirroring is the staffing, to staff those apparatus. So in keeping with the model that we had discussed in our staffing model and maintaining that concept, what I'm looking to do is now match our resource allocation to the same thing and utilizing a vehicle that will actually flex like we do with our staff. So that's why we went with this technology. It is a newer technology that is out there, but it is something that we can definitely capitalize on in our support portion of our fleet. Because our main fleet has basically four pieces of apparatus, and everything else we use is a support to that. And that support normally comes when we do recalls. And we want to be able to flex, instead of owning all of these trucks, I just want to own the bodies that go with the trucks and have one truck to deliver them. And the nice thing is, if I had to, because the DPW actually has the same, has been using the same concept, we could, if my truck was broken or we needed multiple trucks, we could utilize their truck to deliver our pods. So we have that flexibility in our system to be able to do that, and it just gives us much more flexibility when we're looking at that. So that's what our goal is.
That's an interesting point. I just want to intercheck to DPW, how often do they use that same truck version for their own purposes?
Yeah, well, they're using it... Yeah, they're using it, when I spoke to Todd, they're using it all the time, depending upon what they're doing in the season. So like now, it has a sander and a plow on it. In the spring and summer in that area, it has a dump body on it. But then they, I don't know if they have a flat body like we're trying to do, because I mean for them, but they have a tremendous amount of... The picture I gave you is actually the, in the document. I think was the...
Page 41.
It's a sander.
Yep, page 41, yes.
Okay. Sorry to take you off here.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's what we're looking to do. We're, you know, so we're heading in that fashion in the sense of going down this direction and trying to capitalize on keeping our staffing the way it is and keeping our model, because I think that's working for us. You know, with your approval of the peak level staffing and the surge staffing, it's provided us a tremendous capability to flex. And that's what I'm looking to try to do, instead of just investing in apparatus that's going to sit there. Because like the two squads that we currently have really only respond to fire calls. That's all they do. And I can count on one hand the number of times we've put them into use. One is because one of them is broken and it's not worth investing in it. But the other one, we've used it at private events for fireworks and the such. You know, so it's, to me, I need something that's a little bit more flexible, instead of just owning lots of equipment that we don't have the place to store anyways.
How does your thinking today compare to where you were last year when you were initially suggesting this kind of vehicle in lieu of buying new squad vehicles?
I'm in the same place. I think it's a tremendous idea that if we can capitalize on that concept, it just gives us that much more flexibility to do what we need to do. So for us, depending upon, you know, we're coming into the burn season, you know, so you can open burning. So now, we would put on that, we would put the brush unit on that truck for that. But if we had a big storm coming in like we've had two or three times last year and the year before, we'd put the sander and a plow on it to ensure that our ambulances can get to that point. Because that's one of our greatest concerns during these big storms and weather events, is that I can't get my ambulance to those people's homes. I mean, we'll, not that we're in the plowing business, because we're not, but we're in the medical business, but we have to be able to get to the home to get it. We'll plow people's driveways just to get our ambulance close.
You'd have more control over it versus trying to call in DPW workers who are already out in the...
And Todd has offered his services to us, but we've tried to capitalize and utilize him, but their truck might be on the other part of town while we're going to a different part of town as opposed to sending a truck with our truck to get that patient as quick as we can. And also, another component of that is if we can clear that space, it helps us not to have the injuries and the slips and falls while we're trying to climb into people's driveways that's not plowed and trips, you know, and injuries and department injuries, then, you know, that's a tremendous cost to us.
Is there any downside to your recommendation?
I'm sorry?
Any downside to your recommendation?
I don't really see a downside. It's going to be a change in culture for the department, for sure, because they're used to a very traditional eastern concept of how we do the fire service, where you buy, if you want to deliver this service, you buy a truck to deliver that service. But just like much of my change that I've instituted, you know, since I got here in November of '17, some of them have to come kicking and screaming, but most of them, once they see the philosophy behind it, really buy into it. And like I've said all along, I work with a bunch of rock stars. So it's just changing a cultural mindset, and once they get on board, they're on a board 100%. And they're actually in the, hey, chief, can we do this? And let's design this type of pod, you know, then they're all over it. So that's the only downside I see. It's going to be a bit of a change in a culture for them. But for the most part, I think we're a definite go with this concept.
Questions, John? Michael?
So chief, I noticed that, and I'm looking at the current fleet and assignments and swapping them out, or years of replacement.
Yep.
So this, so I noticed that up in 2021 is B1, Fire Station 1 for brush fires. Will that help defer the cost of replacing that truck, or you still need to replace that one next year?
I'm actually going to bump that one. That truck only has, that truck is actually designed to work in university station because it can get into the garage for garage fires and things like that, but it only has 3,000 miles on it.
Okay.
So we're actually going to, we're going to bump that one out further.
Okay.
And a lot of the stuff, we're looking at the fleet and when being able to switch and do things with a different truck where you're not really worried about the, how the truck runs, you know, like the transmission, the engine and all that, you're worried about a pod. So if you maintain the pods, that's what you're worried about there in that sense, and you don't have to replace as frequently. That's my goal. You'll never be able to do this like with an engine. Those have to stay on their cycle because, you know, those go out first. But we'll be able to shift in some of the other things in that brush truck, I don't think, we're going to be able to easily bounce that one out further.
So thinking down the road, so I'm just thinking down the road. So if we buy the pods, we usually buy those once, right? So if we ended up just buying another body, would we then have two versatile farther down the road that, you know, you could switch the bodies? Let's say that we have five bodies or four bodies in this shop. Now we can put two on as opposed to just the one truck.
So downstream, what you're saying is like brush B1?
Yeah, somewhere down the road.
B1 will probably become also a multipurpose vehicle, so I'll have two vehicles in the fleet that can switch bodies, and we'll buy a second, we'll buy a second brush body for it. So we'll be able to have two brush bodies. But again, I got to keep it at a size, you know, to be able to get it in the... So we got to look at that. But we have some other options that we can do with that. But that would be the goal when we replace it, you know, so we can deliver these pods with multiple vehicles.
Okay.
So in summary, you're asking for support for $400,000 swap body apparatus versus replacing two squad vehicles at $425,000 each, plus related expenses that would go with those. So we're, it'd be more than two times the cost if we go with the traditional?
Yes, because we're, one of the pods is a cascade system which fills our air breathing apparatus, and it can be filled in the station because that one's going to be designed, it'll be actually parked in the station. And when it's there, we'll have a transfer switch which will plug into the shore power, which is the power that's in the building, which will power the compressor. And then if we need it on scene, where if we had a big fire, or not even a big fire, any fire because of our staffing, we need, we can't shuffle the bottles back and forth, we really need something on site, we would deliver it on site, drop it off, then go get another pod, you know, and bring that pod up for picking stuff up, and then another pod to secure the resident's belongings if that needed it. So we'd have the flexibility to do that. But I have to buy a new cascade system because the cascade system at Station 1 is on its last legs. We're just limping that one through. I don't want to invest in another one that's a standalone that's in the station if I can put it on a pod and be able to deliver it downstream. So all of that stuff, I had lumped into this concept instead of putting it into the capital budget in this cycle as we started to go through to get that replaced. So that's the ultimate goal with this here.
And chief, we have a notation in our materials that I think will be part of the discussion as we go forward with the Finance and Warrant Commission, that simultaneous with this request, there's an application to see if we can fund a portion of it, substantial portion of it, through a grant.
Yes. So I was going to talk to you about that because we are, it was in the infancy stages prior to this. Now we're really going gung ho with this, and it's looking really good. Now, they have not announced the 2019 AFG grant period yet. That's supposed to come out in the next week or so. And then it could be eight months to a year before the award and all that. So originally, I had looked to do the whole thing and just get it done, but knowing that we had all these other concerns and in keeping the budget where we want to keep the budget, especially with capital, I'd like to request that we at least, at a minimum, put in the matching component, which is $20,000.
Oh, yeah.
Which is a 5% matching for this, in hopes that we get the grant, because it is, from my understanding, looking pretty good from what my grant writers are telling me. They've gotten a lot of interest in it.
But when you would hear would be...
It would be a while. So we'd have to limp some of the stuff through. We'd limp Squad 1 until we got this done. But I'm looking for a long-term commitment in change in philosophy, not a short-term fix. So I'd rather do it the right way, and if we can do that, and, because as we know, I have a fire station that needs to be looked at, so there's going to be other money that we got to talk about.
So this would be a subject of more conversation on how to actually carry this one forward.
Yes. And I'd leave that up to the expert on how Pam sees it fitting into the system. That's not my world in the overall budget, but...
Well, I think it's commendable that you're pursuing an opportunity to find funding. You know, anytime we can do that, that's a great thing. At the same time, we don't want to handicap the department in terms of delivery of service.
Right.
So finding the balance.
Right.
It's what we need to do. I think you've articulated a very strong case about this, and I think we should look at how best to bring it forward and carry on the discussions with Finance and Warrant Commission and then see what we do for the funding amount.
And I will just add, we put a notation on all capital that it's, allows for grant applications, and if that money comes in, we would reduce the original appropriation. And I will just say, as we look at your next meeting at the capital articles and what you want to put forward, if you were to propose this truck at $400,000, and there's one item in our municipal list, a large DPW piece of equipment that's almost $400,000, those are larger than our normal, smaller vehicles that we like to pay as you go. You know, we would propose paying those over time and putting those into a borrowing article, as we've done in the past for other large equipment. We will be going out to market with other borrowing this year. So we could have the two large vehicles as a borrowing article. That allows you to have the language for acceptance of grants at a certain point. We would only end up borrowing the net amount. We wouldn't look for a long period for those vehicles, less than a five-year period, but it would allow us to pay for those over time where they're larger than normal appropriations.
And the interest rate environment is still favorable.
Interest rate environment is terrific.
Okay.
And lets you get those done and not, you know, try to pay all that out in cash.
Okay. All right. Well, more to follow, but thank you for the update and the analysis.
Get Pam up to speed and Chris up to speed on where we're at with the grant process.
Great. Okay. Sounds good. Anything else, Pam, you want to cover? We have more material in here about Appendix D and everything else, but you kind of gave us the update you needed us to know.
I think that's where we are today.
Yeah.
I think we're moving along in good shape, and I know the schools are also with their budget, and we'll be continuing to work with them. And we'll be continuing to work with them. And we'll be back again in your January 21st meeting. At that point, looking to get a sense of what we will put out in that initial budget proposal for February 1.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Excuse me. Okay, the next section up is a discussion of annual town meeting warrants, the articles that would go before town meeting. I want to make a statement beforehand. There are a couple of articles that have been added that if we have a discussion on them, I will recuse myself. They happen to pertain to the former Westwood Lodge property. And I live in close proximity to that property. And on the advice of council, I will recuse myself from a discussion of them. But in terms of framing the overall discussion, they're on the list. And I, you know, we'll just talk about it in very general terms and then I'll leave when the time comes. We do have an update on warrant articles and we do have some new ones. I'm going to ask somebody from WAC to come forward. That's one of the ones we have on our list that we haven't yet discussed. I don't know, Steve, would you like to come forward as chair? Okay. Any discussion is going to be brief.
Any one of you who wants to step up.
That is my caveat.
Or every two step back.
So we have, and WAC, the Westwood Environmental Action Committee, is a committee that this board appoints. So, and as we have done in the past and did just last year, if, if we put this article on, it would be a cosponsorship because you're an extension of us. The request is for a non-binding article which would serve as a resolution to encourage municipal buildings to be net zero energy for future construction of new buildings. Having said that, do you want to make a brief statement? Because I really, not looking for a big presentation tonight on, on why you folks would like to bring this forward.
Good thing, because we didn't prepare one.
Yeah.
There is, we need to, as a planet, need to zero our carbon emissions in order to maintain a livable planet for our children and our grandchildren and even ourselves. Technology is moving forward quickly and enabling buildings to be constructed such that they can produce as much energy as they consume by using efficient seeds and renewable energy and electrifying everything. So we thought it would be wise to maybe not quite codify it, but strongly encourage that any new building projects that the town takes on would pursue this type of design and construction. It would not only save, it would supposedly not cost any more than a traditional building. And it would save a lot in operational costs over the lifetime of the building.
Yeah, I think with the school building project that is underway, I know there's, in selecting the, the architect part of the design selection was firms that were attuned, in tune to what needs to be done to create net zero energy buildings. So that's certainly timely because that hasn't been designed yet.
Right.
If I can add, there is a report that I would be able to, be happy to share with you from the Green Building Council. They examine, they study six buildings in Massachusetts, three of which are schools. And there is a good analysis of how they were built and, and the cost and, and the payback, even if there is a small additional cost. Also, the amount of money in electricity that in the end the town saves with these kinds of schools, $100,000 every year for the duration of the, the life of the schools.
I know we talked, I was at your last meeting about Tom Philbin attending the school building committee meetings. It might be good if he does so, if he can talk to the designers and share that information with them.
We'll try to go to one of us.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. But I, I think the group is very open to this. And I think one of the reasons to bring this forward is just to show the support around it.
Exactly. And ultimately encourage individuals and businesses to do the same thing since it is technologically feasible.
Yeah, any questions? Any concerns about adding this?
No, thanks for reading it forward. It's great. Thanks for doing the work on it.
Okay, all right.
Do you have any suggestion about the text?
Oh, in terms of that, I think you should listen to, well, Pat, our town council has shared his views. Personally, I think less is more. I think you're going to be successful by just talking about what we have already. And I think from a cost standpoint, if the analysis justifies doing so, even if there are upfront costs that are higher, the return on making that investment and just the, the wiseness of having buildings serve themselves and not have to be a drain on more energy resources.
They're beautiful buildings, if you see the photos, they're beautiful.
And, you know, we're certainly, as a community, made progress and there's more progress to make. And I think that's, while we're continuing to do some new buildings, it's a great opportunity. So I, I would encourage you to take the advice of town council.
You know where I am.
Yes.
And, and, you know, there could be good discussions, but I think we want to be focused.
Listen, the part of your text that I gave a haircut to, my father was a barber, so I feel I can put it that way. Isn't that, I oppose what you're saying there? It's just that we have a history here of not putting justifications in warrant articles, okay? So if you have someone who perhaps isn't as believing as the two of you are in climate change, but just believes in being cost-effective, by having that justification as part of the article may turn them against you. Prime example is the Road Bond warrant article that we're talking about. There won't be justifications in that, but there'll be justifications that's presented to the FinCom in the town meeting floor. So that's the proper place for that, in my opinion, not in the text of the article.
Not in the text of the article.
Very well-written, by the way. I'm not taking any, not discouraging authorship by any stretch of the imagination.
You have to credit Brookline. We borrowed heavily from their article.
No need to reinvent the wheel.
That's right.
Yeah, I, I think we should focus on the goal.
Right.
And the goal is to positively influence how our buildings are designed going forward.
So the plan, we'll discuss it on Thursday with a meeting and then will it be submitted?
Well, I think you already have submitted it unless there's, unless you come back and want to talk to town council about anything else.
Without the, then with all the changes accepted.
And we'll be previewing these articles with the Finance and Warrant Commission at the end of the month, the 28th, if I'm not mistaken. Does that sound right? Previewing, emphasis on previewing. They are at the public hearings, but we'll be talking about the articles. So if somebody wants to be there, we'll be providing some reinformation as to what to expect is really what that, that night entails.
So one of us should be there too.
I, not a bad idea.
Can hurt.
Not a bad idea, okay? So thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along, we have an additional new article that would ask for the town to change the overnight parking restriction hours. At our last meeting, I spoke about how parking restrictions are in place right now from 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM. And the DPW is requesting that we change those hours from midnight to 7:00 AM. I'm sure they could use a little more assistance in making sure vehicles are off the road when they need to be plowing overnight. And that would be the origins of why that request. So that, that's been added to the list. I'll skip over.
I suppose, my hesitancy in reading it, I understand what the DPW wants it. What if it's not snowing? What is the issue of, you know, I'm thinking about people who have guests over, right? And so the party goes later than midnight. Does that mean that technically they can be ticking?
The police are not going to be driving around looking to remove those cars.
I know, but what it says is, it doesn't say any of that.
Right, I mean, it does say that.
I mean, in Boston, they do like a parking emergency and that means that you can't park. And so the hours get changed when they're during a snow emergency. So I understand to, to make both people happy, or ones that would say, why two? You know, why not one? But if there's a snow emergency, we can actually make it earlier depending on the snowstorm. Right.
We can.
I'm just wondering how that language will.
But it's, it's, the challenge is on communicating it. In Boston, all three major news stations will announce a snow parking emergency.
Yeah, we do, we do the reverse 911 call for everything from voting to.
We should be limiting those as much as we can.
People don't.
And we may have to do that if we have a heavy snowfall that starts at like 7:00 o'clock at night. We need people to get their cars off so the DPW can do their job.
Why don't we have the DPW director come into our next meeting and just.
Police chief.
You can, or somebody representing the police department who would be responsible for that. Just so we, if we have questions on the board, let's ask them before we take it before a finance commission.
Sure.
Okay. All right, I'll skip over the next two and hold that. Nora, would you take a moment to talk to us about an article or articles for the sale of the, potential sale of the Obed Baker House? It's been a while since we've heard about this.
It has.
And it's probably worth you mentioning where we are and why this is a warrant article you'd like us to include.
So you may recall past attempts to sell the Obed Baker House. We had an RFP issued in 2014. There were no takers. We did it again in 2015. We actually had three interested parties selected. The high bidder didn't work out and the, the sale never went through. And then we tried again in 2017. We had two Westwood residents, actually, different parties who were interested and asked us to put it out again. We put it out for one reason or another, neither of them bid. So the, the RFP again went unanswered. Well, those two parties are still interested and have come back and asked, would we put it out one more time? They're interested in, in bidding on it. They would like it, both of them are interested in it for purchase. Past RFPs offered purchase or lease options. Both of these parties are interested in purchase. We could still do it, put the RFP out for purchase or lease and maybe cast a wider net and see if there's anyone else who's interested in either purchasing or leasing the building. It's, there are two parcels. If you recall, one parcel that the Obed Baker House sits on here on High Street is zoned for commercial use. There's a parcel next to it that could be used for parking. That's owned for residential use. And so there's a limit to how much of that could be used for parking for a commercial building. The, the different interested parties have different ideas for what they'd like to do, but both of them think that they would need additional parking. What I would recommend is that we go out for a request for proposals in the next month or so. And if we are successful and we have a, one or more proposals that look interesting to the board that you want to pursue it, then go to town meeting with an article that would allow for the sale or lease of the, of the parcel. And if the selected proposal requires a rezoning, either of that adjacent parcel to commercial use to allow more parking or of the entire property, we could take it up at that time. So what I'm requesting is that you consider at least one article to allow for the sale and perhaps two articles so that one article could allow for rezoning if that seems appropriate based on the proposals you receive. So it's all.
So it's January 6th. How quickly can we issue this RFP and get a response?
Probably we could have, have it advertised within two weeks. And we would probably want to allow at least two weeks for applicants to respond. I think I'd, I'd suggest three. So I would say five weeks, five weeks from now.
Mid-February at best.
Have an answer. Yes.
February's a short month. Would it make sense to proceed as if we need more? And that is, we think it will need the rezoning. We think it will need approval to sell or lease. I wouldn't limit it.
Madam Chairman, my advice is if you think you're going to need a zoning article, hold a spot for it right now.
Yeah, and, but, but have the discussion and say, this is hypothetical to a certain degree, but possible, and we want to have the discussion now. And as we get towards early March, late March, either those public hearings will have a more definitive.
Or we would withdraw the articles if there was no proposal. And if there is a proposal, then it's a discreet, understandable use that you're asking for. So it's not a conceptual rezoning. It's rezoning to allow a very specific proposal to go forward.
You know, having a building sitting there for 16 years now not being used is.
It's a waste.
It's a waste. Okay, I'm going to recuse myself. I'm going to let Mr. Walsh take over and just let you know.
Did you want to do the last one?
Oh, thank you. Before I go, there's one more article that's been added on by the planning board. So they had eight articles, if you can just wait, please. This would be the ninth one. And they are looking to add an amendment to the Open Space Residential Development Bylaw to clarify how open space is calculated and looking to remove backyards from being included in that calculation. So we've been told, and I, I guess articles or concepts are being sent to town council?
We're trying to, yeah, we're working with them. We have a meeting, they have a meeting tomorrow night. The first item on the agenda is, is town meeting warrant articles.
After comprehensive plan. I know, they're talking about that.
I think they're going to take it out of water.
Oh, okay, okay. So anyway.
But no, it's high on the agenda.
Okay.
And hopefully after that, we have more answers than questions.
Great, all right.
Okay, we'll let you know when you can come back. So there are two other articles that have to do with the, to accept former Westwood Lodge properties. So the Green Company has applied for and received an Open Space Residential Development, an OSRD, special permit to redevelop the former Westwood Lodge property at 45 Clapboard Tree in April. In accordance with that special permit approval, the Green Company has offered to transfer two parcels of land to the town. The first parcel contains a soccer field slash lacrosse field and a associated 40-car parking lot. It's 2.8 acres, it's shown on Lot 8. And, um, let's see, it was endorsed by the Westwood Planning Board on October 1st of 2019. This parcel has been offered to the town for continued recreational use. That would be one article. The second parcel is currently leased to LifeWorks for the construction and operation of a five-unit group home for persons with disability. This is a 40,000 square foot parcel and it's shown on Lot 1 and endorsed by the Planning Board in June of 2019. This parcel is also being offered to the town to allow for increased control over the long-term use of the property for a special group home that qualifies for five units under the Affordable Housing of the Subsidized Housing Inventory, or SHI as we now refer to it. Town meeting would be, approval would be required to accept both properties. So with that understanding, the select board is considering putting two articles on to accept those properties. Any discussion, John?
So Pat, how does that, the, the, we will, the town will own the property that that five-bedroom house sits on?
And leased to, my understanding is they'll have a lease with LifeWorks, yeah.
And the owner of the property, of the, the house, the structure is?
The town.
No, the owner of the house would be LifeWorks. We would own the property underneath it.
So we're not responsible for the maintenance of the house?
Not my understanding, no.
Well, we will be, obviously we'd be taking care of the fields.
Right.
The DPW would take care of the fields, yeah.
And the DPW has.
They do now.
Taken care of that field since its inception.
That's, I think, yeah, ever since.
We maintain it and ensure it.
Yes.
So that won't be any different.
So we need both articles to accept both pieces of property.
Yes, anytime someone wants to give you property, the town's got to approve it.
Okay, any questions? John, anything else? Okay. Let's see. Is that it? We just have approval in minutes? No, we have to close the annual town. She's waiting. We're just going to keep going without you, but that's it. Yeah, we're up to close the annual town meeting warrant.
Okay, so it looks like we have, I don't know if we have a tally of the number of articles at this point.
I don't think we do yet, though.
We don't, okay. But we have discussed articles and we have also discussed adding some additional placeholders in the event that any of articles, like capital articles, break up into smaller components or whatever. It's best that we reserve some for the potential for the list to grow a little bit. And we have no petitioner articles, am I correct, council and town administrator?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
No petitioner articles, okay. So we opened the town warrant, town meeting warrant, on November 18th, 2019. And tonight we will close it. I'll take a motion to do so.
I move that we vote to close the warrant, which includes the proposed articles for the annual town meeting as we discussed, and publish the articles, article listing on the town's website.
Madam Chairman, one point of order, I again would recommend that you hold two articles.
articles, one for the acceptance, I mean for the disposition of the Obed Baker House, and one for a potential zoning article. So it's listed on your list as one. I think it should be two. And then you should, you are talking about maintaining four miscellaneous articles should something come up between now and town meeting.
Okay. So the motion holds up.
Motion holds.
Second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you, town council. We have minutes from two meetings in December, December 9th and December 16th. Tisha's copies of those, just.
31 articles.
Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight.
Did you get 31 articles?
I didn't count them.
Okay. Is it two and two? Two? Okay, two?
Your turn.
Two? Two?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So December 9th, minutes, any amendments to those?
No, we didn't have any amendments.
No, neither.
I'm good, yeah.
Okay. I move that we approve the select board minutes for December 9th, 2019, consisting of eight pages. Second.
All in favor?
As written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. And minutes from December 16th.
I'm good. No changes.
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. I move that we approve the select board minutes of this, of our December 16th meeting consisting of 11 pages as written. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. All right, we are not going into executive session tonight. Any questions from the public or press? Hearing, none. Our next meeting will be held.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, January 21st, here in the Gillette Meeting Room at 7:30 PM. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.